There we go. We'll call the meeting to order. July 18th, District 518, School Board Meeting. Let the record reflect, all board members are present except Matt Widboom is not here currently. Recognition of visitors and guests, like to welcome all of you here this evening. Looks like we have a nice crowd. Thank you for coming. Correspondence and recognition, public participation. I've received no requests for public participation. Recognition of students and staff and community, I don't have anything this evening, so. We'll go on to approve of agenda, consent agenda. And main agenda, on the main agenda, we need to remove 5.3 and 5.11 from the main agenda. Need a motion with those removed.
I make a motion to approve the agendas with the adjustments.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by Adam, second by Lori, to approve the agendas as presented with removal of 5.3 and 5.11. Any discussion?
I just want to say for one point on the consent agenda, with the proposal to move board meetings to 5:15 for the upcoming school year, I will not be able to make some of those meetings.
That's on the consent, is it?
Yes.
So I didn't even look at that.
So if you want, you can move that to the main agenda for discussion. It wasn't meant necessarily to be, we're going to move it without a conversation, so we probably should have had that one on the main agenda anyway.
I'll make a motion to, to move that item on the consent, consent agenda to the main agenda.
Which number was that?
4.4.
4.4.
4.4. Okay, we'll remove 4.4 from the consent agenda to the main agenda. And.
5.17.
We'll put it at 5.17.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, with that change, we have a motion, second, to with that change, right?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of minutes.
We have to vote on the approval of the agendas now that they're amended.
Oh, no, we got to vote on the main one, okay. That was amendment, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Amendment passed, now we'll vote on the motion. Which will have the consent agenda and the main agenda adjusted with 5.7, 5.17 having the consent agenda, I had to move over to the main agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of minutes.
I move approval of the June 20th, 23 regular school board meeting minutes and to accept the committee meetings as included in our packets.
Second. Second by Tom.
Motion by Lori, second by Tom, to approve minutes of 3.1 and 3.2. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we will go on to approve the items on the consent agenda. With the removal of.
4.4.
4.4.
So moved.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Aaron, to approve the consent agenda, accept the item 4.4. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Main agenda with the removal of 5.3 and 5.11, and the addition of 5.17. Need a motion?
We already approved. No, we're just.
It's already adjusted, so it'd be 5.1, move to financial overview.
Okay, so, okay, that was, okay. That was already approved on, on second motion. Okay, financial overview, Dave.
You should have the revenues and expenditures through the end of June, and these are the unaudited, obviously. So these will get adjusted as the auditors do their work. Just a note, the summer salaries for the teachers mostly will account for about $3 million addition to this when it gets adjusted. But right now, we're sitting right at 94% on the revenues and just under 92% on the expenditures, so. Once the auditors get going, we'll get these adjusted later. Nothing really new or unusual last month, so.
Okay, any questions for Dave? Hearing none, we'll move on to 5.2, approve student handbook changes.
The instructional committee reviewed the student handbooks. With that then, they are recommending approval of the student handbook with a number of changes related to legislative action.
Okay, need a motion to approve the handbook changes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Adam, second by Lori, to approve the student handbook. Any discussion?
This is all the buildings, all the building handbooks, so.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.4, approve long-term facility maintenance plan.
This was, go ahead, John.
Each year, we're required to approve a 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. Again, as you get out in that 10th year, it's kind of a little obscure and taking some estimates or guestimates of the projects that would be out there, but you have to have a 10-year plan. So this is the annual requirement of approving that long-term facility maintenance plan. Operation Committee is recommending approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 10-year facility plan.
Second by Tom.
Motion by Steve, second by Tom, to approve the long-term facility maintenance plan, plan, any, excuse me, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.5, approve surplus property.
We had a, we had a request from the marching band to declare some surplus property. There's flags from the, the flag girls and plumes. There's, it's, it's mostly costume-related and flag-related items that they're no longer using, that they would like to dispose of, so we need to declare it surplus.
I move approval of the surplus property.
Motion by Adam.
Second.
Second by Aaron, to approve the surplus property. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.6, approve first reading of policies. 102, 418, 419, 424, 425, 507, 509, 513, 514, 515, 516.5, 532, 602, 603, 604, 613, 616, 618, 620, 621, 624, 708, 709, and 806.
Chair, just a note, 534 was not listed, and it should be added in there. That was reviewed by the Operations Committee, so, just as a note, that one's in the body of the description in there, but wasn't listed in your, in your titling area there, so.
And so you're aware, the Instructional Committee did look at 601, but I need to adjust a sentence or two in one of the definitions of 601, so I remove that from this prior to the agenda being sent out. So that'll show up next month.
Well, these are all the correct numbers.
Yes, the ones listed on your agenda are correct.
I make a motion to approve the first readings of the policies as listed, including 5.34.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Lori, to approve the first reading of the policies that I just read. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. 5.7, approve organizational charts.
So this was presented to the Operations Committee. Each year, we update the organizational charts, starting from the board, going down through the entire district. Each building has an individual organization chart, and there is an instructional, operational. So we do this every year. There's a couple adjustments that typically happen, trying to make sure we have the right alignment across the district, so it was reviewed and recommended for approval.
I move approval of the organizational charts.
Second.
Motion by Lori, second by Adam, to approve the organizational charts, charts. Any discussion?
Was there any changes, many at all, or?
There were in a few buildings where example positions either were changed by title or restructured, or there was some alignment changes, because the building might not have had the correct alignment for last year, so not major changes, but a few.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.8, approve Juneteenth holiday for 12-month employees.
So based on legislation, originally, this was not to go into effect till 2024. In the last minutes of the legislative session, they moved it to 23. So from the end of the session till this holiday came up really quick, we did approve 12-month employees to receive that holiday this last year, and based on the leadership recommendation to the Operations Committee, and then also their recommendation there, the recommendation is to approve a 12th, or 11th holiday, excuse me, I don't want to give them another one yet, 11th holiday for all 12-month employees.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the Juneteenth holiday for 12-month employees.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Aaron, to approve the Juneteenth as additional holiday for all 12-month employees for 518 employees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.9, approve memorial auditorium agreement for 23, 20 through 26. Dave?
We just completed the third year of our prior third year, three-year agreement with the city for the use of memorial auditorium. We basically have 62 days available for our activities, which include the play, the musical, a number of concerts that are held at the auditorium. This agreement had very few changes other than the cost, and it was approximately a 4% increase per year. So the, this current year would be $35,000. 24, 25 would be at $36,500, and July of 25 to 26 is $38,000. And we would recommend, it's been a great relationship with the, with the city. We're not aware of any issues that have been going on, and they didn't have any for us either, so it's a good deal for the school, and it gives a nice performance area for our kids.
Okay, any questions for Dave?
I move, I move approval of the memorial auditorium contract for the next three years.
Okay, second, but, motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Steve, to approve the memorial auditorium agreement for 23 through 26. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.10, approve resolution relating to renewal of an existing expiring referendum.
So with this, this was discussed at the work session, it was also presented to the Operations Committee. Basically, by legislative action this year, the district has the option of approving the current existing operating referendum, must be for the same per pupil funding, must be for the same length of time. For the district, ours goes through 2024, but you must, if you are going to use this option, approve the resolution moving forward prior to June 15th of 2024. You can do it anytime from now till then, if you're going to utilize the option of board authority to approve the operating referendum. Likewise, at this meeting for this resolution, if there are any people here, you must provide the opportunity for them to share their feelings about renewal of the operating referendum. So prior to approval, that must occur. So with that, the Operation Committee did recommend moving it to the board meeting, and doing it, and getting taken care of. So the recommendations is for action to approve it now, since you will probably consider doing that anyway prior to June 15th, and then it's done and set up, and we can work through that. But again, you must listen to public comment if there's anybody who wishes to address that this evening.
Okay, at this point, we will ask for any public input about renewing the existing levy, referendum that's in place. We can renew it for the next 10 years.
And I probably should address, when this was originally passed, it was $1,000 per pupil unit. At this point, because of what this legislative action has done, it's assumed $500 of that per pupil unit, so L, what's considered LOR revenue is at 725, and the district has now a $500 per pupil unit, and it would be for 10 years. So, sorry, I should have included that.
Any public input about us renewing the existing levy for the operating? This will be good for the next 10 years. If we see need for additional dollars during those 10 years, the board can ask for additional dollars, but this amount will stay in place for 10 years. Any public input?
Joe.
I think you should move the.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
If we did have to increase it in the next 10 years, it would go to a public, it'd go to a vote of the public and be on a ballot, correct?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, will, it's a roll call vote.
You got to make a motion.
We got to have a motion first.
I would so move that we approve the renewal of the expiring referendum.
Second the motion.
Yes, motion by Steve, second by Lori, to renew the existing levy for 10 years, operating levy. Now, any further discussion? Now we have a roll call vote.
Mr. Dudley. Aye. Mr. Lorenz. Aye. Mr. Schrute. Mr. Blum. Mr. Blum. Mr. Peter. Mr. Schrute. Mr. Blum. 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 But until they make that up, they do not get a signed diploma, so.
That's correct. They do not actually graduate.
What if they don't? What if they decide not to, all of a sudden?
They still don't graduate.
They don't get the signed diploma.
They get to walk in the ceremony.
Yeah, it's unfair to the people that earned their credits to let them walk across the stage when they got some integrity and getting a diploma. I mean, I guess I would ask Mr. Hastings to clarify that, because I'll be honest, I don't really agree with this. What, what would be the reasoning for going to a credit and a half? Because that's a lot of credits they have to make up compared to a kid that put his time in.
My thought was that this was a ceremony that is, for a lot of our students, first generation, it's a ceremony that if, if they don't get to participate in it, they don't, a lot of times don't, they don't do it the following year. We did have 10 students graduate from, they'd walk, and then they went to summer school, and then they did complete the requirements. So our thoughts were, the ceremony itself is a pretty special event for our students, knowing that if a student is obviously more than a credit and a half behind, then they would not participate in walking in the ceremony, and more credit recovery would be needed, summer and beyond. They still would not, obviously, they still need 30 credits to graduate. It's not giving them a diploma, it's allowing them to participate in the ceremony, and a majority of our students graduate from summer school.
And then it was my feeling too, that we're already allowing it to happen, a half a credit short, so one more credit to 1.5, you know. Either you allow it or you don't allow it, and so it's my feeling that you allow it to happen, and let those kids walk and enjoy graduation, in the hopes that they will get back to summer school, get it finished up, and get their diploma.
I get a question for Tony. Why were these 10 individual short credits? Is there a reason behind why they were short?
A lot of variety, I mean, I still think coming out of COVID is, is one of the reasons. Again, we have a number of situations, a number of instances of why students are short of credits. Sometimes it's the required credits that our students are, are lacking as well, it might not be necessarily the number of credits that they have, especially a lot of our BL have a number of credits, but it's the core classes that we're focusing in on, so finishing off core classes is another big thing that we're trying to do, whether it's night school or summer school.
I have a question for Mr. Hastings. Do you, so, so this would positively impact, you know, would have impacted 10 students this past year, approximately?
Yeah, they still, they still walked, we, just an example of them being allowed to walk with a half a credit, and then they, those 10 students did go on to summer school, and then they did graduate, so we would hope that the same thing would happen with the credit and the half, knowing that they would have to enroll in summer school, and the credits that they're short have to be classes that are offered during summer school as well.
Do you have a sense of how many students walk but ultimately don't earn their diploma at the end of the summer?
I think it's very low, maybe one or two. I think I heard of, a counselor company earlier this week that said that one of their students that was a half credit behind but still walked did not complete summer school. So you do have that happen as well.
Thank you.
So Tony, you said there was 10 that were short a half a credit?
Yeah.
So had you got any number, how many were short a credit and a half then? You got a number on that one, or?
No, I'd have to probably do more investigation on that and talk to Spencer over at the Learning Center. So I don't know exact numbers of how many seniors were, efficient more than the half credit. I just know that we did have 10 more seniors graduate during summer school. And that, those 10 were a half a credit, because they were able to walk.
So, so the current policy is a half a credit, they can walk?
Correct.
We're gonna go to one, and, and the proposal is to go to 1.5 credits and still be able to walk.
Right, and they can earn, a student could earn 1.5 during summer school. And this, again, it's a lot, they're not given a free pass, we're allowing students to participate in this ceremony. If they're short, then they are not allowed to participate in that ceremony. And again, we're, I'm advocating for our students and our families that this is a pretty special event for a lot of our, our families. And if they're short a half credit, a credit, a credit and a half, it, it just allows them the opportunity to participate in that ceremony, knowing that they, they're not done, they have to complete summer school to finish earning that diploma. And obviously, that's what our end goal is, is the diploma.
So do most of these kids know going into their senior year that they got some work to do to graduate?
For sure, that's why we have the counselors and our advisory teachers work with our, our seniors. I mean, our advisory teachers work with our students throughout their four years. We have credit checkers that we, we do on a regular basis. Obviously, parent teacher conferences, we try to keep updating our parents on where they're sitting at. Counselors meet with especially seniors on a regular basis. Our advisory teachers meet with the students. I mean, they're, they're in advisory for five days, so they know where they're sitting. So our students do know, that's why we have the option of the Learning Center for credit recovery, and obviously night school as well for credit recovery. So we are constantly updating our students on how they're sitting credit wise.
So they have the chance throughout the nine months or whatever we're in school to take night class and work with the counselor to know they're gonna meet the credits on graduation day?
Yes, that's, and they're getting it up to the students to put in the work and the credits. But yeah, we have definite support. We have the four counselors, we have the teachers that are supporting them. We have parent input, the parent support to get our students to graduation.
I guess I just kind of feel like if they know that they got nine months to get with it, they shouldn't have to have a summer. It's kind of like handing a participation trophy over to a kid. Hey, thanks for coming, good job. There's, there's something to say about earning your diploma, in my opinion.
Yeah, and they're still earning the diploma. They're not given a diploma where this is just asking them to be part of a ceremony. And then they're given the diploma when they reach the requirements of 30 credits, and then they earn the diploma.
Okay.
What, what is the state rule on number of credits? Is there, is there a threshold from a state level?
There's a minimum.
Are we over that?
Yeah, we're above the state minimum.
You know what that number is?
I don't off the top of my head.
Tony, do you know that number?
No, I do not.
I'm just.
We, we all have our, our core classes that we, our safety departments, like three math credits, three and a half social studies, and language arts, we are required. And I know we go above and beyond. I mean, we have like our careers classes, the class that we have as a district, but it's not a statewide. State has standards and a number of credits. Every school is different though, too, when it comes to credits. Like, we're, we're a block system, so we have half credits. Some, some schools, high schools are period, so they have full credits. So they have their own systems. Obviously, we have our standards before and by the state that we have to follow. And those guide our credit requirements. And then they obviously have the electing classes that we offer as well.
Okay, any further discussion? Basically, what we're saying is they can walk, but they don't have the diploma until they earn the credit or half credit, credit or credit and a half. If they don't have a credit and a half, they do not walk.
Correct, if they are.
If they're more short.
If they're less than a credit and a half, if they're two credits or more, not walk. And they get at least, they'll encourage them to participate in summer school. And then they always have the option to come back in the fall to finish up and earn their diploma at the Learning Center.
So they have to learn, they have to earn them credits through summer school then? Or did you just say they can come back the following year?
Well, if, a lot of times if students have more than a credit and a half that they can earn during summer school, let's say a student at this four credits behind, typically a student will go to summer school because they can accelerate their graduation from the Learning Center. They will typically go to the Learning Center, earn their credits that they need. And once they get their requirements from the Learning Center, then they can graduate. That's why they have graduations throughout the year at the Learning Center, where we only have our graduation at the end of the year.
I guess I'm sitting on the fence. If the students had the opportunity, the whole nine months, to take night classes to make up that credit and a half or whatever it takes, and they didn't do it in nine months, why are they gonna do it in one month in the summertime? I'm sitting on the fence. I need to be persuaded how to vote yes or no. I mean, I just.
Yeah, I mean, we, we obviously will follow what the school board deems appropriate. We brought this to you, obviously, the instructional committee, knowing that a student could earn the credit and a half. I think, again, the ceremony is a part of the ceremony. Again, we're not giving a diploma to students that have short credits. We're allowing them to participate in this ceremony in which it's for some of these students, a once in a lifetime activity or event that families are kind of disappointed if they hear my student is a credit behind, so then they don't get to participate in graduation. They go to summer school, they graduate, but they miss out on the ceremony. So it's more about, are you willing to include our students that are a credit and a half behind in this ceremony?
What was the instructional committee's recommendation?
Well, you know, we're having this exact same discussion that we're having right now. And, you know, some feelings are that, you know, we're lowering the bar, allowing kids to walk without having the appropriate amount of credits. They could come back the following year, correct, Tony? And earn a, a credit or two or three and graduate with the class behind, behind them. I don't think they'd do that. And, and I said, like I said before, we're already allowing them to walk with half a credit short. So the difference between one more credit to make it a credit and a half, to me, we've already had this discussion, what, John, 12 years ago, 50, whenever we allowed it to happen? So again, in my opinion, we need to allow them to walk.
Well, we're not lowering the bar, because we still have to get the credit and a half, so. It's just, it's, it's just that they can go with their classmates and take part in the ceremony. It's just kind of a courtesy thing, I call it.
I'm sympathetic to the students who've had sort of an, an untraditional journey to obtain their education, whether their education began in a different country or whether it was interrupted at some other point for some other reason. Many of our students in this district aren't able to take night classes because they have jobs in the evenings or they have family responsibilities to take care of other siblings or perhaps children of their own. So if the summertime is the, the best opportunity for them to obtain those extra credits, I would support giving them the extra boost by allowing them to walk during commencement, rather than it being really a very, you know, deflating to be so close, not be able to walk, and then still, you know, getting the motivation they would need to pursue those last few classes. So I'm, I'm, I'm sympathetic, and I think that it's, it's a good gesture to bring this to our attention and consider it, given that a credit and a half could be earned during the summertime.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion by Steve, second by Aaron.
So.
So we have a motion?
Correct.
We have a motion, a second, I forget. Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to allow a student to participate in graduation. A credit and a half short, if they're more than a credit and a half short, they cannot take part in the graduation. But the diploma doesn't get signed until they earn the credit and a half, so. Any further discussion? We know what the motion is? Hearing none, all those in favor, segment probably saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve requests for one year leave of absence.
Yes, so we have a request for a one-year leave of absence for personal reasons. So with that, it would be for this current 23-24 school year, and I would recommend that you approve the leave of absence.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Lori, to approve the leave of absence request for one year.
If we approve the absence, does that guarantee them the job? Or does that just guarantee them a job?
It guarantees a job, like or similar, like or similar salary as well. Yes. That's for anybody who's on leave, that's whatever position in the district.
If it's not approved, then what happens to the individual?
The expectation would be to come back in a position.
In a position?
In either the position they left or one that we assign.
We have any more discussion? We have a motion, or?
Yeah, we have a motion, a second.
We have a motion and a second.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, segment probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve acting intermediate principal for 23-24.
So with this, the recommendation is to approve Cory Van Breezen as the acting intermediate school principal for the 23-24 school year.
So move, Steve. Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Lori. To approve Cory.
Cory Van Breezen.
Cory Van Breezen.
Yeah.
Acting principal?
Correct.
For 23-24. Any further discussion? All those in favor, segment probably saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. 5.15, approve acting, no, we did that. 5.16.
No, 5.15. Assistant principal.
Well, assistant, okay, yeah, I was thinking principal. 1.5.15 is approve acting intermediate assistant principal.
So with that, the acting intermediate assistant principal would be Jeff Luke, and it would be strictly for one year. So it'd be the 23-24 school year only. And I would recommend you approve that.
I approve Jeff Luke as the acting school assistant principal for one year.
Okay, motion by Lori.
Second, Steve.
Second by Steve to approve Jeff Luke as assistant, acting assistant principal for one year at the intermediate school. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so next, beans this is for one year for both Cory and Jeff. At what point do we know which direction we're gonna be going with whomever?
So my goal would be by February, March, to have some kind of.
Soon.
Finalized plan.
Okay. It's not gonna drag into next summer?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, segment probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, 5.17.
5.16.
We still got 1.6. 5.16, approve safety and benefit increase for technology director.
So the negotiation committee had met with the technology director. They are recommending approval of the package. It's 9.76 the first year and 3.99 the first, second year for a total of 14.16. The first year is a correction adjustment for salary based on the position.
Okay.
I move approval of salary and benefit increase for the technology director as stated.
Second by Tom.
Motion by Lori, segment Tom, to approve the technology director wages for 23 and 24. 23, 24, 24, 25. Any discussion? All those in favor, segment probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. 5.17 is the board meeting time.
So just brief history on that. It was typically this board when I started, long time ago, met at 7:00, I believe it was 7:00. At that point, I don't remember when we moved to the 5:15 timeframe. It's gotta be at least a dozen years ago. And at that point, we were at 5:15 for a number of years. And then within the last two years, we've moved it to 6:15. And it was meant to have a conversation about, do you want to move it up slightly? Do you want to move it back? Where do we want to be with this time? Because, and again, some board members have a conflict with their work schedules, so it makes it difficult for the 5:15. And there were other reasons for that, so. And maybe there's a compromise, I don't know.
7:00? Oh, that's too late. What's, what's the conflict right now?
6:15, so part of it is that worked well because we finished our workday, then we moved right into the school board meeting, and then it didn't take up the whole evening. If, right now, there's a gap between what I would consider the normal workday and the time that the school board meeting exists. And there was always fear that there wouldn't at 5:15 be the opportunity for participation, but that has never seemed to be a problem. But it worked well for the board members that were on the board at that time. But it probably potentially doesn't work well at this point in time. And so you have to adjust and figure out the schedule that's going to work.
So my question is still, what's the conflict at this point? I don't have a conflict, I'm not sure.
I did last time.
Did you?
Yeah.
I'm not always down for eating cattle.
Okay.
So that's, anyway. If you want to maintain it at the same time, my preference, I like the 5:15, but, you know, because we finished the workday, we moved right into the meeting, and then we were done.
I like to keep it at 6:15, because a lot of times, if I'm gone, not every, it's, in my book, 5:15 is still in the middle of the afternoon. I like to see it at 6:15, it's, just fits better for my routine. Does it work for you?
6:15 is preferable for me. Oftentimes, I have to go up to the cities for work, that's where court is. And court would adjourn around 3:00 PM. I can hustle back and be here by 6:15, but I would not be able to make a 5:15 meeting on days that I have to be in court.
Any other preference?
No preference.
Adam, what's your?
Yeah, I like the 6:15.
The 6:15, and it works for you?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I mean.
I can make it work a lot easier. I mean, I can sit, I know that it gotta be done by then. There's times where, yeah, it's difficult, but we made it work in the past. But I think for Aaron's sake, you got an issue there. How many meetings would you miss? Three, four? I mean, that's not the purpose of why we want to be early anyways. So we want all our board members to be here as possible, so. I just think it makes it easier for most, not everyone. Like you say, it's not a conflict for you. Like you say, it's not a conflict for you.
Personally, I don't have a problem with five fifteen, five thirty, five forty-five, six thirty, seven o'clock. I, I'd rather, you know, if I can accommodate other people's schedules, I'm more than happy to, uh, to do some of that. So, uh, I know it's not necessarily best for staff to, to have to go, come back or do those types of things. You know, the gap in there is, is a, can be a hardship, but, but also the board members being able to attend and stuff is important too, so. So you need a motion on this or just discussion?
It was discussion at this point. If you were going to change the time, you would need a motion. If you aren't changing the time, we just move forward.
My vote is to leave alone.
Well, what I'm hearing is there's not enough, there's not enough interest in changing the time, so it will remain at six fifteen, unless somebody's willing to make a motion.
Yeah, I have no problem with any time variables, so. Okay, we'll leave it at six fifteen. Reports, John?
Yeah, and I'm only gonna report on one thing, uh, because of the work session and what, where there's at. And I wanted to bring up the entire board on where negotiations are at with the remaining groups, which we have one individual contract holder, um, that we haven't finalized with. And I'm thinking that should happen in the next few weeks. And then we have with Education Minnesota Worthington. So where that is at currently, the district has proposal for internal sub-teacher coverage language that at this point has not reached a position. The district has proposed personal leave language, some which they would be favorable or supported by the association, but there might be something in there that they're not, at this point, willing to agree to. Leave of absence, there was also kinda trying to clean up the increased costs, but also what we're doing in practice as part of that. There is hours of service language that we were looking for adjustment on. Association activities and late resignations, which was some language we were trying to get adjusted. As far as E M W, um, what is remaining overload pay. And we currently have what they're basically proposing in practice, um, but they would prefer to have that in language. Eye glass benefit, currently it has been in years past a hundred. The district has offered to counter at two hundred and fifty and the E M W has proposed five hundred. Leaves of absence, they proposed to a, adjust the leave, emergency leave. They would like inclimate weather and accidents included. We've agreed to include the accidents at this point, but not the inclimate weather piece. Under the subdivision two, yeah, they did provide some alternative language for the, uh, alter, for the inclimate weather. On new sick days, they're asking for contract rate of pay. I E P management, um, there's some pieces in there regarding I E P management language and E L access testing preparation. Likewise, special education, education caseload language. Under the teacher severance program, there is four oh three B. The old severance plan ended as of June thirtieth. And it's now a four oh three B and they are looking to change the years as well as the contribution level with that, so that's part of that. Likewise, late resignation language, they're looking for some adjustment in that language. And then for extracurricular appendix E, which is summer school language, they have proposed a dollar figure for each year of forty-five and forty-seven. Extracurricular pay assignment, they have winter dance competition under there. We already have that in the contract and have an option for that. Likewise, they have, we have had conversations about special education workload limits and caseload. And, uh, as far as the overall, that's the outstanding language at this point. There is tentative agreements on some of the language items. I'm not gonna go through those, I didn't bring that with me. Financial proposal, total package at this point, the district has proposed eight point oh two percent. E M W has prov, proposed seventeen point four seven percent. So that's the update where we're at with the Education Minnesota Worthington. That's all I'm covering, yep.
Okay, thank you, John. Instructional committee report?
Everything's been covered. We did get a staff update and we did talk about the legacy wall commitments and also video board, scoreboard advertisement. There's a few blocks there that can be, if you wanna advertise, you can talk to John about that. Otherwise, everything's covered.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Instructional operational committee?
Nothing else to report.
Nothing else to report. Thanks, Steve. Any other reports? Other business? We will have a work session right after the board meeting. Any other business to come before the board?
So, and I'm watching how I say this, I understand that you're in negotiations with John. Will we have an update there someday coming or?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we'll, we'll be getting to that, so, yep. Any other business? Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting.